Okay, I am going to call our regular Board of Education meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is our mission statement. Bridgette?
Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you. Annie, roll call?
Yeah, Chris?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
I am here. We have a forum.
Thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. We are going to add a number thirteen, which is closed session for the purposes of negotiations. So then adjournment will become fourteen. So then I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our first item is presentations. United Dairy Industry of Michigan Jump With Jill Grant. Sue Bevins is here this evening.
In April of this year, I was made aware of a grant opportunity through United Dairy Industry of Michigan, UDIM, for their Jump With Jill program. They were offering scholarships to districts to bring that program into the district as an assembly for elementary schools. I talked to Brian at that time, and you know, we thought that this would be a great promotional activity for our elementary students to promote our wellness event that we're having on September nineteenth. So we were, I worked with Mrs. Compo at the middle school, and she involved her sixth grade video class in this activity, and she assigned a project for them to create a video for us for this grant submission. And they worked with the Lee Elementary students and came up with the whole concept, did all the editing. They did a fabulous job. We submitted it, and we were awarded the grant, and they were able to support our preferred date. So we will have an assembly at Lee Elementary with Jump With Jill from nine-thirty to ten-thirty on Friday, September eighteenth. UDIM is also loaning us their mascot costumes. They have three mascot costumes for that event as well. And they've been very good to Richmond this year. I also was given, awarded another grant for a smoothie machine for the high school. So we will be offering dairy-based smoothies as a breakfast option for a meal, for breakfast, as well as an à la carte option during the lunch period. So very thankful to UDIM. They're very supportive of community efforts in school districts, and just a big thank you to them. And we're going to show you the video that the students put together for the submission.
Join us as we learn about the letter M and healthy living. So what does the letter M have to do with being healthy?
Milk. Movements. Models. Moderation. Motivation.
Why is it important to drink milk?
Because it helps your bones.
Because it makes you stronger.
Because it's good for you. Makes you stronger. You're stronger.
You're healthier.
Because it helps your body.
Well, it's because it's healthy for your bones and your teeth.
Why is movement so important?
Because it's smart. And you can do more stuff.
What kind of all your muscles are doing?
I'm sure it's just nails. But it gets higher and greater.
Milk, movement, muscles, motivation, and moderation. Now you know of the letter M, get healthy, keep you happy.
That's excellent.
That's awesome. It's a great task. Congratulations to the community and school. We should get on with our Jump With Jill plan.
Excellent. Thank you, Sue.
Who needs to wear the mascot?
I think we're recruiting some high school football players to wear the mascot.
Not you, in case there's someone who wants that.
I don't know, Dan's always big on mascot-wearing costumes.
I just want to thanks Mrs. Bevins, Sue Bevins, because she's constantly looking for ways to improve the food service program and going out after grants to help the students in the district become more healthy and more fitness-oriented. She's been one of the players in our community health fair that we're sponsoring on September nineteenth. It's the first flyers are going out, went out in the registration packets. It's a partnership between Henry Ford Health Systems, McLaren. There's some local sponsors that have provided some financial support, Growing Smiles, First State Bank, Anytime Fitness, Dr. Julian Senior Healthers. And it's a day of events at the middle school and high school regarding healthy lifestyles, healthy fitness, eating, et cetera. So I'm going to encourage the community to come out. And I thank Sue for writing this grant to get our students motivated to come out to this event. And then culminating that weekend, we're sponsoring a watering station at the Romeo to Richmond Run, Richmond Community Schools. It's right at thirty-four and Omo Road. So I'll be seeking any volunteers who want to help pass out water to those that are doing the five K run. It's from eight to twelve that day, so if you're interested or anybody else, I'll be putting a call up there. And just to show that Richmond Community Schools really wants to promote a healthy lifestyle in our community among our students and our families and communities, so.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you, Sue. Next is second reading of board policies. At our last meeting, we went through all of these policies for a first reading, and I know that Chris and Jeff were not here, and I don't know if you guys have any questions from the first reading? Of any?
I did have one question when I was looking at the immunization policy. It didn't state how often the parent would have to go and seek counseling from the health department. Would that be on an annual basis or one time?
It's not on an annual basis. There are certain points where a student has to have their immunization updated. It's, I think it's sixth grade and it's a ninth grade area. Can't remember off the top of my head. At that point, if they're going to continue to exempt themselves from immunization, they need to go through the process or the paperwork with the health department.
Yep. Jeff, did you have any questions? Anyone else? Okay. Since there are no questions, we'll call this the second reading. There's no reason to go through all of it all over again. We already did, so that will be our second reading. Next is legislative update. Brian?
I think the major, I'm just going to update a couple of things that are coming out of Lansing that is on the radar for school districts across the state. As you know, the voters overwhelmingly defeated the proposal for funding the roads. So the legislators are trying to figure out how they're going to raise approximately 1.2 billion dollars to fund that. And the information coming out is about 600 million dollars in new revenue, raising fees and so forth. But what is most concerning, because it isn't clear out there, is they're looking for 600 million dollars in cuts to the current budget to move those dollars for the road funding. Where, as a school system, where I see the potential this could happen and why we need to keep our eye on it, is the funding for community colleges could be reduced in the general fund, and more of that coming out of the school aid fund to get the 600 million dollars they're looking for. So it's just something we need to be on our radar and talk to our legislators about not taking that fund, the school aid fund, for something it's not, really wasn't earmarked for. The, they're starting the adequate funding in this year, this budget that was approved the fiscal year sixteen. There's adequacy funding study that's being done, so there's several companies that are vying for that contract to see what does it actually cost to educate someone in Michigan, a student in Michigan's public schools. At the last meeting, I presented an overview of the financial, if you have less than five percent in your fund balance, and give, though we are not there, we're at least two years out, if to even be close to that. But there's several legislations regarding that have gone into effect immediately. Most, though it doesn't affect us, it does affect many of our neighboring districts, which is a lot more, there's more compliance and regulatory submissions they have to do for accounting purposes, which could fall into us depending on what they're going to require from school districts. So otherwise, that's, that's it.
Okay.
In the report, you emailed us a weekly report, too. There was mention of the state increasing the fee for teacher testing. So if you're in college, you're intending to be a teacher, you have to take tests and you have to pass those tests in order to get your certification, and so they, they're...
The cap is off those fees now, so they can raise those fees to really whatever they feel is necessary for revenue sources with the state.
Interesting. And the last time I heard, only a third of those people who take those tests actually can pass those tests to become teachers. So there are universities in the state, actually, who are dropping their education departments and no longer doing teacher preparation because there are so few people going into education. And that testing is one of the reasons why. I think there are lots of other reasons, but it's just for our future in education, that's just a scary thing to think that they're going to then up the price for people to be able to take that, that test, make it more difficult of a process.
Shane, your stomach's growling.
Oh, sorry, little honey.
Next is items of interest from members of the board. Does anybody have anything?
Well, I'll just give a short synopsis. I took the time to go to the Michigan Association of School Boards Summer School a week ago Friday at Boeing Highlands Resort in Harbor Springs. That's a rough place to spend some time for a day. It's beautiful up there. But I was in class, and I took one course on public education advocacy that was really helpful in reminding me and hopefully to remind all of you as our job as board members to be advocates for public education. And the person who presented talked about each one of us needing to have like five points kind of in our back pocket, ready to mention to anyone out in the public about what's going on in our school district, what's going on in Richmond Community Schools. And then probably a couple of points about anything that might be a little controversial, that would be factual information, that would be our job to be out in the community talking about and saying as advocates. And then the other course I took was on ethics, Ethics in Action. And it was a good reminder to review our own code of conduct, our own ethics statement that's in our policy, for each one of us to do that and to then be real clear about how we act that out, how we live that out on a regular basis. And then a really good idea of making sure that at our organizational meeting, we take the time to go through that and really be clear with one another what we think all of that is about and what it means and how we live it out collectively as a board and individually. And I think the greatest takeaway for me came out of the public education, the advocacy one that I went to, just in the idea of, we had to practice, our assignment was that we had to write a letter to the editor during the course. And what I wondered and thought about is, you know, here we are kind of at the final stages of all of this amazing bond work that's been done. And would it be a benefit for each one of us to take the opportunity to write a letter of thank you to the editor, to the voice, or to a newspaper of choice, to say thank you and hey, this is what's going on with that money? I mean, a personal letter from each one of us to that.
From each, like an individual, as opposed to something coming from the board?
From the board. Just something to think about for us to consider, I guess. But it was a recommendation from the workshop that I went to, so. Thought I'd put it out there.
Thanks, Tracy. Anyone else?
Yeah. In the last meeting, we, I presented the, Margaret was the invitation for the Richmond Good Old Days Parade. She returned it, signed it. I mean, it's not completely filled out, I guess.
Because I don't know how tall the bus is or how wide the bus is.
On a school bus.
No, I don't know that answer. And I'm figuring, I'm figuring that we'll be good.
But anyway, we kind of talked, and I don't know if anybody else is interested, if do we get new T-shirts or something this year? If anybody has any ideas or if we want to do that.
Because Chris doesn't have one.
Right. And I don't want to come in yellow or something.
No, and we don't want you in yellow.
Well, we could have fun with that. We could just tell her to come in something completely different.
And the rest of us look different? Yeah, that'd be nice.
We all wear clown suits, yeah.
Yeah. No, I think it's a good idea.
But that's just something, yeah. So I mean, if she needs a shirt, then I'll have to look into seeing some different ideas.
So then we'll kind of give you an idea, and you'll just take care of everything?
Sure.
With the shirts? Okay, that'd be great. Because you are the shirt man.
I am the shirt man.
You are. You make all the shirts happen around here, so. That'd be good.
So, yeah. So we are walking, I don't, but Chris and Jeff, we're just doing the same thing we did last year, walking with the school bus and passing out pencils and stickers.
Brian's already got the pencils.
Stickers have been ordered?
That's all done, so.
You hand the stickers out, throw the pencils. That's how it works.
Practice.
That's good stuff.
That's all I got.
Anybody else?
The football team has their home opener on Thursday, so seven o'clock. Be there.
Very good. Anyone else? I just want to let everyone know publicly that our board member, Andy Odakirk, has resigned from the board, and I just wanted to share his letter that he sent to me with the rest of the board. His resignation was effective on August tenth, and it says, "It is with a sincere disappointment that I must step down effective immediately from my position on the Richmond Community Schools Board of Education for personal reasons. The last two years I have spent on the board have been both personally and professionally rewarding. I wish all the board members and the superintendent continued success in polishing the gem of Macomb County. I remain committed to the direction and policies of the board, and if I can assist in any way as a member of the community, please reach out to me. Sincerely, Andy Odakirk." So I just kind of wanted to do that official, and I wanted to publicly thank Andy for the great work that he did with us for his short time through the superintendent hiring process, everything. Andy was a very strong voice and a very good reasoning mind and helped me out in different situations, good phone calls, and he just, he was a very good board member, and he will be missed. And just want to thank him for all of his work and wish him well from here on out. That's it. Anybody else?
Could I say something?
You certainly may.
Another board, but just want, we won't meet until after school starts next time, so I just want to remind the parents out there that the high school and middle school registration packets have been mailed. Middle school probably started receiving theirs today or tomorrow in the mail. Elementary will go out, my target date is Wednesday with their teacher assignments. We have, we're doing something a little different this year, doing Blue Devil Days for grades five through twelve. The information is also on the website for parents in terms of times. Part of that process is to get their school pictures, their IDs, their schedules, and ultimately end up with the laptops that the board approved last May. In fact, they just arrived today, all the laptops, so we will be ready.
Perfect.
Lot of laptops here, so. It's going to be an exciting day just to get the energy going and so forth for the students. We can make schedule changes, and the idea behind Blue Devil Days is we can minimize lost instructional time during the school year. By getting most of this paperwork out of the way. And kids are excited. They want to see the building, they want to see where their classes are and their new teacher assignments. And there's a lot of changes in some of the buildings. Our hallways have been painted, and most buildings are ready. Got the new signage that was approved with the teachers' names up, and it's getting there, so. We will be ready for school to start this year. We were a little under the gun last year, but we are ready to start.
And those, doing a Blue Devil Days really does, coming from having worked in school, and you do it before, it saves the chaos of the first day of school of all that kind of stuff. You're right, so.
Trying to respect the instructional time.
Yep, exactly. Great, thank you.
And Brian, is there still a dinner for new families?
I may have to change that date because we're having trouble pulling new families. We got a list, but we're trying, but once I have that finalized with the catering and stuff, I will have, I will get that out. I'm trying to coordinate with schedules of practices and soccer, trying to pick a date that, right now it's scheduled for Monday, but it'll probably be a little later on, but I will get that out to you guys, so.
All right, thank you.
But yeah, we are going to do a welcome dinner for all new families through Richmond Schools.
Speaking of dinners, do we need, are we good for the county board dinner? Is there anything else that needs to be done or discussed as far as that goes?
I talked to Ms. Michonne about the science area. I have to talk to Mrs. Shack regarding the band's performance, and I did not head over to the Village Cafe. I have to reach out to them yet, some of our community sponsors. But based on the last meeting that the board had, we're pursuing that one. It's going to showcase the science and technology in our district, so.
Okay.
As well as many other programs.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Dan. Next, public comments, portion of our meeting where if anyone in the audience would like to address the board, they can. Just come up, state your name, and if there's something that we can reply to, we will. There's a card up there to put your name on it. Is there anyone who would like to speak? No, okay, we will move on, since there's no one in the audience. Well, I mean, no one that...
She's not calling you guys nobody.
No, I didn't mean you guys are no, I'm just looking around thinking there isn't anything. They want to go home. They don't, they don't want to come up and keep it going. Next, consent agenda. We'll do the motion first, Brian. I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Brian?
Tonight, we have one of our two assisted network computer technicians, Harold Schwanger, is over there. He will be servicing the middle school. Brandon Rydell is, he'll be servicing the elementary school. If you recall, in the last budget, we added these two positions to support the technology, so they are learning our systems and getting ready to launch Blue Devil Days with all the technology. So I welcome, I know Eric's been walking around with a big smile. They have a couple set of extra hands, but...
Just going to say the sweat's not as much on his forehead.
But no, we welcome them. They both come to us with just a varied background, extensive knowledge in the computer business. In fact, Carol owned, you currently own or owned?
Owned.
Owned, has owned a computer company, more on the business side of industry, so he's looking, it's just a pleasure to have them.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Welcome, yes. Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you and welcome, and thank you for being here tonight as well. Yes.
Is there, is there another?
There's a page two.
But is there another retirement? No, just resignations.
Karen Bosman.
Okay, so there was a retirement at our last meeting as well. Just to clarify, I mean, are we do, are they going to be coming to another board meeting to be honored or...
I'll work with Terry, we'll coordinate coming, then come to a future board meeting so we can honor them as a record.
Maybe we can plan something for maybe that first meeting in October since it's so close to September.
It was a food service.
Yeah, dry.
Yeah, that's right, Jean Drym, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to make sure that's going to happen. Great.
Thanks. Okay. Next, approval of board policies. There is a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached revised board policies as presented on August ten, two thousand fifteen, for a first reading, and August twenty-four, two thousand fifteen, for a second reading.
Support.
Was that you, Jeff? It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is approval of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen Athletic Coaches Handbook.
At the, at the previous meeting, we addressed some of the changes, recommendations, some of its title changes, some of its department changes. There's some procedural changes on who to notify, and it's in the attached as the strike through, so I'm requesting the approval of the Athletic Coaches Handbook.
Okay. There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and accept the attached Athletic Coaches Handbook as a second and final reading. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of two thousand fifteen, sixteen Student Athlete Handbook.
Again, there was a couple changes. One of them dealt with title changes regarding the dean of students, as well as some changes to the athletic department, but the most notable change is regarding the description regarding the hair, the color of hair that was, when it was previously recommended to the board, that was the one that was, probably had the most controversial, I don't know if controversial is the correct word, but when we did the survey among the staff, the parents, and as well as discussion here at the board, so when we sat and looked at this and started to think, okay, what, does this change the image of the district and so forth, it was decided to remove that portion of it.
So that section should just say dress code?
Correct.
Dress code and hairstyle.
Correct, yes, and I will.
It's thirteen.
Thank you.
Okay.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and accept the attached Student Athlete Code of Conduct Handbook as a second and final reading.
Support.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of NWEA license renewal for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year.
In the presentation that Mr. Burkhardt did last time, he talked about the results of NWA, and we had talked about that at a previous meeting, it was back in June. The NWA is a countywide initiative regarding, and so the county supports this by paying roughly half the cost of the bill. We have to put the bill out first, and then they reimburse us. So I'm requesting that we renew our licenses for NWA for the fifteen, sixteen school year.
Okay. There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of the renewal of NWEA licenses for a total not to exceed the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty thousand dollars presented in the documentation provided.
Support.
Okay. Excuse me, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I mean, what's a typical, I mean, when do you, when do you evaluate the evaluation?
I mean, what, how do you, I mean, I know we know it's doing what it needs to do, but are you with it for five years, and then you decide, oh, maybe that's not the right assessment anymore for us? Or, you know what I'm saying?
My personal experience says between around the five-year mark is when you're looking at, is what you're doing in the classroom... at, is what you're doing in the classroom or for professional development tied into these results making a difference? And if it isn't, what's the disconnect? The NWA assessment, if you recall, this year where all of our teachers will be training classroom instruction that works, and if we're implementing those practices in our classroom, we should start seeing even better results in NWA. The piece that I think is the most valuable of this, of this assessment or any assessment that's similar to this, is it identifies where students begin. So if they're already below grade level or already above grade level, it gives us a starting point that that's where we need to educate the child at that point and push them as far as we can get them. Rather than teaching to the whole. And where classroom instruction strategies come in is, as a teacher, if I know I have X number of students that are at the high end and X number at the low, I now can, I need to adjust my instruction to address their needs too and not just that bell curve in the middle. So typically, my experience is looking at a five-year data trend, three to five years. This is our first full year of having three data points and seeing that growth. In the 13th, 14th school year, we didn't have as many data points at all three buildings. So we're now on a consistent path to start looking at it and actually using the data, so.
I just, with any of these tools.
It's, I think it's important to evaluate the tool to make sure it's the right tool for us. You know what I'm saying? So if it's a five-year, you stick with NWA for five years because that's what, and then Iowa and that, you know what I mean? I mean, do you look at other assessment tools to determine?
Whenever you're looking at whether the success of a program, you really should look at three data points.
Right.
Something referred to triangulate your data.
Right.
This is one piece. Now, what we get from the state, whether it's M-Step or SAT or ACT is another piece because they should be in alignment with what we're teaching our students. The piece that we need to do a better job as a district is, when that data comes back, helping teachers use that data and figuring out how to, whether it's grouping kids into the appropriate instructional groups or designing their lesson, that's where our focus really has to be.
And that's common, no matter what the assessment is.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, right.
I think, I remember, I remember when we were sitting on the other side and I got first hired and we had approved it for the 15-16, there were some staff members who weren't necessarily supportive in the audience of NWA, and I truly believe, having now gone through a year, there wasn't a, it was a compliance for some staff members rather than what does this data give you for instructional purposes?
Yeah.
We're getting there. We're starting to point out to staff, here's the benefits of it. And when we get to the next item, the e-Spark, this ties right into programming for students as far as Title I students, so.
Sure, right.
I do have a question. In addition to the NWA, what other assessments are the teachers required to do because it sometimes gets to a point where there's just too much assessment and not enough instruction? So is there anything that's being eliminated? Or is the NWA all that we're doing? Are we still doing DIBELS? What other assessments are we required to give to these children?
At the elementary schools, we are going to begin phasing out DIBELS with the phase in of DRA, developmental reading. I don't know if you're familiar with DRA?
We do. We do contact and now, yeah, we do guided reading.
It's very similar, so the information you receive from NWA and that DRA is, it's really to guide instruction. It's not to see, did students master the content? It's where are they at right now so that I can change my plan to meet the kids or the students' needs. So what DRA does is it looks at more specific skills that they may be, like fluency or comprehension or word recognition or something like that, where I can now focus on specific skills.
Okay, so we're doing the NWA, the DRA, we're going to eliminate DIBELS. How about any additional math assessments? Because in our district, we have to do another math assessment, and I just think sometimes assessment.
We don't have, we don't have anything from a district level other than classroom assessments that the teacher would give at the end of a unit, or a lot of times teachers will do exit tickets as you're walking out the door. They sometimes have posted notes, put it in the target where you think you are mastery of that skill, and it gives them a quick reference whether I need to reteach that lesson the next day or they've got it, now I need to move to the next lesson. That's what classroom instruction really focuses on with teachers, is you need to have that formative assessment throughout the day or throughout the week to see how are students doing? Don't wait until the end of the chapter and they don't, they haven't mastered it and now you're backtracking trying to figure out where they missed the skill that needs for that mastery.
Okay.
So from a district level, it's NWA K-12. At the elementary level, because it's in, it's also part of their Title I plan, it's phasing out of the DIBELS and going into the DRA, which is, ties into the guided reading level readers that we recently purchased for students.
Okay.
So, but I'm very cautious on the amount of testing.
Sometimes it's like weeks and weeks and then we're missing so much valuable instruction, it's, what's the point of some of this testing?
The benefit where we're going to be at this year is with the one-to-one, we don't have to shut down, relocate classrooms to get them all into a lab, which disrupts the learning. We can pick a day, maybe shut down for that day, distract and be done with it so we can get back with the instructional to see where that data's showing us.
Okay.
Because after a while, I mean, not only staff, but the kids, they don't perform as well on that if it's over a long period of time.
No, they don't.
Which is what they found out with the M-Step and that they released their, they're reducing some of the time on the M-Step for next year because it was so much testing.
Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. I'll do a roll call. Bridget?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries.
Thanks so much to the faculty who made the conversation. That's just a huge, huge.
Yeah, it is. Next, approval of e-Spark learning for the 2015-2016 school year.
The e-Spark learning, last year there were several licenses and, that we had purchased, and it was previous to last year, it was piloted the year before. And in the presentation at the last board meeting, we saw that the students that were consistently on the e-Sparks program began showing achievement scores in the NWA, and that's where we need to get is in terms of one piece of data that we're starting to show achievement. The recommendation is for 200 licenses. I think it's important to realize that 150 of those licenses is paid out of Title I funds, and 50 of those is paid out of general funds for our high need or high academic students, so we'll still run that program there as it was this past school year, too. We, so the recommendation is for 200 licenses for e-Sparks.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, one more thing. The 150 licenses, oh, I did say, is paid out of Title I funds.
Yep.
I didn't want to make sure.
Yep, you did. Okay, thank you. There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of e-Spark learning platform for a total not to exceed 32,300 as presented in the documentation provided.
Support.
Okay. Good. I got Dan there, Terry. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, I do have a question. I'm aware of how kids are qualified into receiving the e-Spark support for Title I. Are we going to establish some kind of criteria for the higher kids this time to alleviate some of the confusion that we had last year? I don't feel like there was like a really solid system in place of how you got accepted to this program.
When we look at the, and I've referenced it several before, the MTSS pyramid, and you look at your, from an at-risk perspective, the 150 are targeting the bottom 30% of the building. When we look at the high-end kids, we're going to target the students that are achieving at that, I think it's about 10% of the building. 50 licenses, about 500 students in the building, so when we look at that achieved, that's our starting point, identifying those kids that we're going to invite into that program. There are other factors that we need to look at.
Are you going to base those on NWA scores?
That's one, that's one of the pieces that we need to look at. It's, just as with Title I, we need to take in teacher input and how they're performing in the class because sometimes students do not do well on a test. Sometimes they perform in a different way, but that's our starting point to begin identifying those students at the higher end.
Okay.
And then what grades this covers?
E-Sparks. It's all of the elementary school. This is where this is at, it's at the elementary school. At the middle school and high school, you start defining different classes. You might have an honors class or an AP class that the higher-end students start funneling into those classes.
So 50 enough?
Typically, it's manageable because the staffing that goes along with it to run it is also, is what I proposed in the budget for you from staffing. And I was like, I'd love to have more staffing, but I'm trying to stay within the budget you gave me, so what do I think I have to?
Yes, you do.
But yeah, so. I think, I think it's enough for starting because we want to build that, I personally want to build that program from a district level to start marketing to families that we do have a program for high-end kids, like students that are, that are performing beyond grade level, that it's, not only the differentiation in the classroom, but there's something that we can provide them in addition to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's been moved and supported. I will do a roll call. Jeff?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Bridget?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. I have a student here. Oh, okay, all right. Next, looking for a motion to go into closed session for purposes of a student reinstatement hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Do a roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Bridget?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Mark?
I vote aye, as I call my own name.
Motion carries. And so we are going to go into closed session, and I believe, are we going to the conference room?
The conference room, yes.
Okay. Okay, we are back in open session, looks like 9:57. Following our student reinstatement hearing, we have a motion?
I make a motion to deny the reinstatement for student 082415 and reconsider an 180 school days.
Support.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
This is the most difficult thing to, as a board of a teaching.
I would have to agree with that wholeheartedly. That being said, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay, now I am looking for a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of negotiations.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Do a roll call. Dan?
Aye.
Bridget?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Go into closed session.[1772.73]